All right, this is called this Council Court Session in Phillips Green Hills, number seventeen, two thousand thirteen, to order with clerk fall the role please.
Adams.
Here.
Breeze.
Here.
Halter here. Hermes.
Here.
Walter here. Weltriman.
Here.
Merle.
Here.
All right, uh, first item of business tonight, um, I guess we'll just start the agenda, how about that? Always the thing to tell, the library sent me a letter, they're, uh, doing their, uh, they're renewing their library ready this fall, so be on the lookout. You can, you can rest assured we will be close to the beginning of a list of closed places, so, um, without further ado, we need to talk about this.
Yes. We have a CRRA community reinvestment area and.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I've kind of wrestled with how, best way to present this to council this time.
Well, I don't have one.
Oh, okay. So, I've given you, uh, packed it with three items. The first one that I think I'd like to take a look at is the one entitled Historic Townhouses and Apartments Available for Acquisition and Rehabilitation in Green Hills, Ohio. This is a document I've been working on for quite some time, just trying to refine it as time permits. Um, I've had Beth take a look at it to, um, give me comments which have been incorporated, and I think, originally I intended to do this as a request for proposals. Um, at this point in time, I, I would just like to get word out on the availability of our properties that we have, so I want to take a minute to review this, and, you know, certainly it's not completely done, there's attachments that I did, copy all that for you tonight involving each piece of property that we have, but, um, if, I could just take you through it a little bit, um, the opportunity, it consists of thirty-two scattered site vacant townhouses and multi-townhouse buildings, and we have two built apartment buildings, um, with one bedroom apartments. These are our village, the properties that we own. The ones that are not included are the ones that are really ready for an owner, they're they're not being included in here, so, um, those are the properties. All right, go down into the second paragraph regarding the townhouses, the village has a strong preference from home, for home ownership of our properties, and then I, I took the time to actually, uh, provide a definition of our code for townhouse because we're, we're unique in that our, our townhouses are not, for the most part, multi-families, they're actual individually owned properties or, or could be, uh, if they, even if they're not currently being used as such, so, uh, I thought it was worth mentioning that. Then I took the time to describe our community, what a Green Hill community is, where the other ones are. I have indicated that, uh, you know, we have the historic district, um, the designation was based on our planning and development, um, that we're seeking landmark status at this time. I talked a little bit about the advantages of living in Green Hills, um, and the fact that there are the sheer number of properties that we have, you know, does create, um, kind of a critical mass, so there's an opportunity to have a, a substantial positive impact on the village with this, um, particular offering of properties. Um, the next exhibit is actually the listing of those properties, and, uh, a couple things struck me as, as we were putting this together. This too has been in kind of a different format as, as I've been working on it, and most recently gave a general description, um, of each. We, we do have, um, one that has a slate covered gable roof, uh, some have flat roofs, some have gable roofs, all but maybe two, uh, which are brick, all the rest do have the original specs with siding on them, um, and you can see the categories, uh, that I broke them down into the scattered townhouses, the ones where we own the entire building with multiple townhouses, and then the one bedroom apartment buildings again. Um, on the next page, I commented on the design considerations, um, what, you know, what our contribution was, uh, to history, including the evolution of cul-de-sacs, the system of pedestrian paths and parks, uh, entire paragraph on that. Talk about the townhouses, and, you know, some of the things that were taken into consideration when those were constructed, and what makes them unique. Uh, same with the apartment buildings, and then I, um, under the terms of the offerings where I outlined the goals, which, uh, for the most part did come from our master plan. Um, those being to reflect and preserve the historic significance of Green Hills, achieve high quality development, um, incorporate a marketing plan, capitalize on any existing homeownership incentives, uh, ensure that we have a sound marketing plan, and certainly a financial, um, good financial backing for whatever gets proposed. Um, ideally, the selected concept could proceed without village subsidy. Um, hopefully, whatever occurs will spur, um, further private investment in Green Hills, and, um, again, to reiterate the desire to have an increase in the owner occupied housing in, in Green Hills. Um, site conditions and terms, the properties are being offered in as-is condition, which is important. Um, also, uh, indicating that the respondents will be expected to renovate the properties according to the Secretary of Interior's standards for rehabilitation of historic structures, and below that other site use, there's ten, um, points on the standards, those are outlined, and I, I want to touch on them for those who may not know this. Um, one is that the property will be used as it was historically, or be given a new use which reflects the property's, um, restoration period. Uh, materials and features in the restoration period will be retained and preserved, the removal of materials or alteration of features, faces and spatial relationships that characterize the period will not be undertaken. Each property will be recognized with a physical record of its time, place, and use. I'm going to skip through some of these a little quicker. Materials, features, spaces, and finishes that characterize other historical periods will be documented prior to their alteration or removal. Uh, distinctive materials, features, finishes, and construction techniques or examples of craftsmanship that characterize the restoration period will be preserved. Deteriorated features from the restoration period will be repaired rather than replaced. With the severity of deterioration, where the severity of deterioration requires replacement of a distinctive feature, the new features will match the old design, color, texture, and where possible materials. Replacement of missing features from the restoration period will be substantiated by documentary and physical evidence. Uh, chemical or physical treatments, if appropriate, will be undertaken using gentlest means if possible. Uh, archaeological resources affected by our project will be protected and preserved, and designs that were never executed historically will not be constructed. And they can seek additional information on those standards by going to the website that I've indicated.
Is Beth, they'll be with us action?
Yes.
How long have these standards been around? At least?
Um, pretty, pretty long time.
Pretty long time?
Oh, great, yeah, this is from the National Park Service. Um, these are their standards.
Park Service.
National Park Service, that's the entity that's, uh, will submit our application for the national historical landmark.
Okay, so these have been around twenty years, thirty years, every year?
Any idea?
Probably over thirty, they've been updated and added to over here.
Okay. Oh, no, I'm fine.
Oh, missed it. What's your break sitting over there, yeah? This is fur. Uh, number ten, does that preclude the use of those UC designs from several years ago? Did you use them, is that what you want?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Now, would that, does, that would preclude the use of those, is that, what that means?
I couldn't comment on that, I don't know.
Those are very broad in nature.
Yeah. Typically, what the Department of Interior wants to see is that you are historically correct from the street. Um, beyond that, you're pretty much free to do behind the buildings, um, where it's properly screened on the sides.
Well, as UC designs pretty significantly change the outward appearance, street side appearance of those.
I think they buried quite a bit.
Yeah, there's, a lot of, a lot of the students took them pretty far, but, you know, exercising their creative juices.
Okay. Nothing's too pretty good.
They have the freedom to do that.
Yeah.
The final page then talks about some financing assumptions, um, again, we can convey the properties at market value or as an amount that may be negotiated. Um, select a developer would have to obtain their own construction and permanent financing, and then possible incentives. Um, I do list a community reinvestment area, uh, the twenty percent tax credit for historic rehabilitation. Ohio has the twenty-five percent historic preservation tax credit, and then Clean Ohio grants. Um, I'll probably add a paragraph of other, other resources that, that may come to our attention or, or may come about during the course of this whole thing, so, um, yes.
I have a question. Is it up to us, um, for the percentage of the tax credit, is there any way that we can have that the, um, the bulk of the tax credit, if somebody's going to live in there opposite to someone that is going to just rent it, uh, to get more, um, I don't know, more, um, help if you're going to be a resident and live in the property?
Sure.
Opposite to just make it, um, just, um, livable, so someone else would rent it instead of becoming a rental property, that's what I'm saying.
Right, um, I understand, and, and no, actually can't incorporate that into that, that legislation, that's, can't pick and choose, uh, you know, that's how they, it's basically a state developed program, um, and you can't choose.
I guess the nice thing about it is you're, it's got to be at least rented for five years straight, otherwise it's going to be put away and back, something, uh, taxes and stuff.
Right. Um, and I want you to kind of get that overview of what we're working with here, again, many of our property, and then we're going to move into, you know, the survey and then the legislation itself, but, uh, keep in mind that we're requiring, uh, these, these properties require, uh, a lot of like basic building and, and system repairs or upgrades, I guess would be a good word for it, um, some degree of environmental remediation, for lack of a better term, will, will probably be required, and then a requirement to historic standards, which isn't a requirement for us at this point in time, but I felt was the right thing to do to incorporate it into this, um, particular document. So, um, don't know if we'll be successful, but I hope that we will be, but I do feel that the incentives are going to be critical to that. Um, now I'd like to take a look at the second document.
Can I ask a question about this?
Yes.
If, if somebody came to us and, I'm just going to pick a property off this list here, somebody came to us and said, "I want to buy a Ashley today," um, and they had a fair market price, would we sell that? Would we consider that, selling that to them, and they wouldn't have to follow these guidelines or these, um, specifics right now? So, we're, am I right?
Right, they don't have to.
Okay.
We would prefer that they do. If everybody's supportive of everything we're doing, I, I would say the first go-round, we, we should try to acquire it and see what we get.
Okay. And do we have any, this is a, the, the way I look at this, we, we have this, uh, these thirty-two properties, uh, we would like to get out of the ownership business, um, and at the same time, we'd like to promote, uh, historic preservation, um, and this is fairly restrictive. We're going to eliminate a portion of the marketplace because of the restrictions here. Do we have any feel this has been done in other communities locally, um, and kind of what the response has been?
I don't know that you're going to find too many local communities that own as much properties, we do, who may have had to go through this.
Right.
Particularly, certainly in terms of the requirements, there are historic, you know, these are historic designations, then I'm sure probably those, but it, it's, I think it's a much different situation without owning with these properties, so, and again, I, I just felt it was the right thing to, um, first shot, give it.
Sure.
You know, everything in there and see what we get.
You had mentioned you had talked, um, or some relationship with the, um, Green Hill.
Uh, Green Hill, actually, yeah, and, um, total what we were doing, and, you know, his suggestion to me was that, don't, don't try it without an incentive program in place, so.
Sure. So?
So, 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 you start, you first up.
Uh, so I understand, if somebody doesn't want the tax incentives, that they can re-happen the place however they want.
No, actually, we're, we're not to that portion yet. I, I, right now, I'm just getting, I'm just telling you about our properties and where I'm wanting to go with our properties right now, and then I'm going to move into that.
But what we're talking about here, and all these stipulations for historic preservation and all that are all in order to get the, uh, tax incentives. These are the conditions, right?
No, right, no, it can't, it can't go that direction. All right, we, we want to offer the tax incentives to get people to do these, to follow these standards. That's what we're going to use to entice them to do this, hopefully, right?
But to Bud's point, if they don't, if one buys a Ashley and they do not follow these guidelines, they don't get the tax incentive, but they're at liberty to.
They could still get the tax incentive, but beyond that property, so we don't have to sell if they're not going to want it to do.
But this is just a suggestion of what we would like, if this is a, uh.
You know, if we get proposals, I, I will bring them to you, so we can discuss them and see how far we can go with the rules to this end.
And then to not confuse anyone else in the village of a private owner of a, another property in around that area, they do not have to follow these guidelines.
Correct.
For the home they currently own, or if they're going to transfer it, this is just village-owned properties, this is what we're suggesting that we would like to have.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, should I keep going?
Sure.
Okay. Um, and some mutation for the community reinvestment area piece, we conducted a house survey, and I've given you a copy, it's a quick two-page summary, uh, and I want to highlight some of those, I, um, some of those items that, that we would, that were developed from this. First of all, under the purpose and scope, I am simply reiterating the text of the legislation that requires that in order to be eligible to become a community reinvestment area, it has to be, and this is a direct quote from the legislation, "An area in which housing facilities or structures of historical significance are located, and new housing construction and repair of existing facility or structures are discouraged." And as we get through this, I'll, I'll outline that for you, okay? Uh, but let, let me just take a minute, that if you, well, no, I shouldn't jump ahead, let me get down to my data. Um, that the area that, I'll, because if it is, sorry, that's for the most part, it's consistent with the current historic district, with the exception of, um, American Legion Building and Johnny's Toys, I believe, that structure, we're not in the district of that building, would benefit from this program. Um, the vast majority of the housing structures in, in the CRA are original, the data, and you're going to see ninety-one percent of them are seventy-five years old. Unbelievably, a lot of them still have, with original roofs, window treatments, doors, siding, um, the structures are aging rapidly, and many of their structural components have exceeded the time period that would have been considered their useful life, thirty, fifty years, seventy-five. Um, investment in these structures needs to be encouraged, there's a small amount of vacant land also that we have for new residential development, um, you'll recall, I've mentioned in here, we had, uh, the new housing development that was initiated about six years ago and still incomplete, with only nine fifteen homes being constructed, so this is again reviewed as an incentive to hopefully have, have those lots completed with new construction. Uh, supporting data, um, there's approximately five hundred fifty housing units here that represents about thirty-three percent of the total that we have in Green Hills. There are eight commercial slash industrial parcels within the CRA that represent seventy-three percent of the total eleven commercial industrial properties that we have in Green Hills. And as you know, for the most part, um, the structures on those are deteriorating and are seriously under construction. The CRA contains a village's only retail center, this investment is very apparent at this center, reflected by its current vacancy rate of approximately sixty-five percent. Um, and here's the figure, approximately ninety-one percent of the residential structures in a proposed CRA boundaries were built between nineteen thirty and over thirty-eight. Um, this certainly demonstrates the historic significance of the, um, area, ninety-one percent of them. Um, and likewise, the, I, I know there's a concern discouragement of new construction, but the fact is, is that when you have ninety-one percent of the structures, seventy-five years or older, I, you know, that you haven't had much new construction, so that's, that's the only point you have to prove to be eligible to get the designation, so that's what's going on there. Um, only two percent of the housing units in the CRA have been constructed since two thousand. Um, seventy percent of the structures located within those boundaries were rated either poor, fair, or in average condition, um, and on average, there's approximately forty building permits issued each year, village-wide, I was not able to break that down for just that specific area, even if, even if all forty were in that particular area, that's not much activity, and that would go towards the criteria that, um, there's not been existing facilities, repair of existing facilities has not occurred. Um, okay, so, bottom line, Green Hills has a large number of properties that are in need of investment, and again, the CRA would be, uh, expected to spur renovation of the existing, and in most cases historic structures, and encourage any new construction potential that we have as well. Um, certainly, it would also be a useful tool for enticing redevelopment, um, of our commercial area that we so desperately need. Now, let's move to the legislation. Get that background, um, and I think, I went through a lot of it, um, but if we skip to the second page, section four, is where we outline the, um, A, B, C, D, and E. Um, A, A, B, and C are for residential, um, that goes up to not more than three residential structures, so those are the, you know, I'm talking single families, two families, and three families, structures in A, B, and C. Um, A and B go towards, um, remodeling, the first one is remodeling where you have an investment of at least twenty-five hundred, the second one is for remodeling, um, uh, where's it, up to at least five thousand, where you contain more than two housing units, but then more than three, so. Then the fifteen years is, um, which is C, is new construction. Right now, all of those are at fifty percent, but quite frankly, after looking at, after really looking at the conditions and the requirements being placed on, you know, people that we hope to attract to this, I would like to suggest that we consider seventy-five percent for A and B, and keep the, um, new construction at, um, the fifty percent. That's, I, I know there's also dissension about, a discussion about demolition, though I don't feel this at all entices demolition, but I would think that would, um, address that issue as well, to keep new construction at fifty percent, but I think if we're going to require people to make the investment that we're hoping they will make, I'd like to see A and B at seventy-five percent.
And this is seventy-five percent of what?
Oh, so that is a good question. That is seventy-five percent exemption on the increase in value resulting from private investments.
So, Dusty's got a place at sixty thousand today, and you go in and throw in some money, and next time Dusty comes out and looks at it and says, "I was worth eighty thousand."
At twenty thousand.
So, this is up to.
Can you say it was first at sixty?
Yeah.
And now it's at eighty?
And now it's at eighty.
And that's the structure. It has to be just the improvement value, not the land value.
Right, the improvement value.
That twenty thousand would be eligible for seventy-five percent exemption.
Okay, so, and this is Dusty's call on the valuation?
Correct. They, they come out and, they'll come out and assess the property once the work is done.
Okay.
Yes, it's based on it.
And if they knew would be the purchase price, would be the value?
The value.
Oh, that's right.
Increased value. So, in your example, the twenty thousand would be eligible, you know, you take it times the real property rate of thirty-five percent, so thirty-five percent of twenty thousand times our mill rate, times seventy-five percent is what they're.
Okay.
I mean, your values are going to go to twenty grand with five thousand on it.
No, but.
No, no, if you put in, you know, twenty-five or thirty, it might go up twenty, depending on, depending on what you do.
Maybe, maybe you, maybe you did it right, you put in ten, you get twenty, or fifteen, you get twenty.
So, what, yeah.
In the city of Cincinnati, basically, that's a hundred percent.
Right.
So, this is a, this is a pretty big home run for those Potter Hill lots.
Probably, they would be a fifty percent.
Fifty percent for fifteen years?
Something we would vote.
On anything that they put there, because they're empty lots right now?
Correct. But they have a pub, so they, they can't just put anything there.
Yeah, anything that complies with the U V.
Right.
Or there are some empty lots that are not U Vs right now.
Correct.
That would be available.
And do we think, do we think that fifty percent's enough? That's kind of what I'm, I'm thinking, and then, it's on the property tax bill, so really, how much of it is actually not coming to the village, is what makes sense.
Well, if you take your property tax bill, and, and these are rough estimates, about a little more, slightly more than half of your tax bill goes to the school district, slightly less than a quarter goes to Hamilton County, and roughly a quarter goes to the village. So, by far, the biggest driver of revenue for the village is income tax. I, I want to say it's sixty-one percent of our revenue comes from income tax.
Yeah. Easily, yes.
I think that's the correct number of, of, of alls, all sources.
Sorry, I don't.
It's not going to go down, it's just that we're not going to see.
No, well, we will.
We can see those miller praise revenues for a period of, of fifteen years.
We'll get more, we will get more, we will get that much more, but until the end of the time, we'll get all of it.
Yeah, we'll get twenty-five percent.
We'll get what we, we're getting when we started.
Right. Plus twenty-five percent of the improvements.
Right, so, yeah, that's altogether a.
It's a net increase.
Right, exactly, it's a net increase.
Whatever happens, it's.
Not to mention the residual effect it has on the rest of the community.
On income tax, on quality of life.
Yeah, income tax is a big thing, I think, too, yeah, and people actually renovating and living there.
Well, income tax, and then also, you know, your house looks better and it's worth more, so then the negative is saving, I mean, that's.
I've been telling Bud that for a long time.
Yeah, I come like grass once a month.
But it means, yeah. But I think really that what is going to be most utilized is going to be the remodeling end of it, we have very, very limited new construction.
Right.
So, the biggest piece of this is going to be the remodeling.
Um, now, just to finish up on, on that page, D and E are commercial, as well as any residential projects that are more than three units. Um, in both of these categories, they are, um, negotiated, a, a contract, uh, um, an agreement for exemptions and a term negotiated on a case-by-case basis, and that has to be in place before a project would start, so.
So, just to call that out, it's negotiation upfront on those versus not necessarily.
Correct. So, if, you know, a, a four family that would be done alone, if they want exempt, this is a good case, if they want exemptions, then we have an opportunity to do some negotiating on what they'll get, so.
Oh, you know, I wanted to ask you something, if, if they're literally going to be coming out to inspect what they do, are they going to make sure that these people end up, because they, they always tell me that if they update to today's standards, you know, electrical and everything else when it comes to kitchens and bathrooms, because that's where your investment comes back big time. They say it's ninety percent return on your money if you do it to today's standards. The wave of electric is right now in, in kitchens and bathrooms and the townhouses, that's not going to work, so they have to do a lot of updating when it comes to that. Doing, is that what that Polaris is saying, that section, that they're going to have to do that to today's standards? If they do that in order to get that exemption, are they going to look that far?
Okay, these are, yeah, these are just based on a dollar amount.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Because, you know, just replacing cabinets and tops and keeping the same electrical and stuff there, that really doesn't do anything.
Yeah, although I think we're, if I understand what you're saying, I think where that would come into play is when the assessor does come out.
Yeah.
And then the value.
See, that, that's.
They take a bigger jump in if they.
Yeah, good, I mean, because that's what they're telling me.
Would you die?
Oh, yeah, big time, I mean, average kitchens have six service. Well, and how do we communicate that to people beforehand when they have an opportunity to, to make that change? You, you know what I mean? Will, will they understand that, um, right now, if we just have a dollar amount and go, "Oh, if I just put in twenty-five hundred dollars, I'm good." Well, so Kenny, what you do.
Yeah, I, you know, I think we need to adequately paint a picture, it has to be, you can invest twenty-five hundred dollars and not even impact your value, it has to be something that's.
Right. See, that's what I'm concerned about, because I, I go to a lot of homes and, and when I see people, I say, "Oh, yeah, I put seven or eight thousand dollars in this house, and what did you do?" Well, it was just maintenance.
If I put a new roof on.
Yeah, that's maintenance, and, you know, that kind of stuff, they, they have to really know where they can get some benefit from this.
Right.
You know, maybe we need like a fact sheet or something that says to maximize this opportunity, these are things you should consider.
Okay, um, I think, I think pretty well covered unless you have some specific questions on.
Can we say?
Where I want to go with this.
That's where, if, and I meant to ask this in finance committee, and I forgot. If this is impacting obviously receipts for Hamilton County as well as the school district, do we have to get any approval, buy-in, et cetera, from them?
As this process moves forward, I'll, I'll be meeting with them to inform them. Their approval comes in when we go to the D and E categories, if there's a negotiated project. If anything would create more than a million dollars in annual payroll, which you can only hope, that would require their approval, or if we go over, I believe with either of these, we would go over the seventy-five percent that would require. It always requires notification, but sometimes.
It doesn't require necessarily agreement.
Right, correct.
As far as having a big impact, I think the commercial end of this could be huge.
Yeah.
To help, I mean, entice someone to.
Yeah, I guess you got here too, community reinvestment, you're going to have a group of people who are getting a housing council.
Right, that's for annual reviews.
Okay.
Of the projects that get done.
Okay, and then that way, whoever's a part of that council, they could probably have on their, you know, were they going to stipulate, letting people know this is probably a good idea to invest in these areas for their house if they want to get full return, you know what I mean?
Yeah, just like the education process.
Yeah, there's kind of something there for that. I think it's going to be important, because a lot of people just don't know.
No, very true, very true. So the housing council is for their residential projects, and then the Texas Center for the councils for the commercial.
Gotcha.
Or residential of three units projects. All of them get reviewed on an annual basis. So, what are the questions?
I can give you a rough sheet on that, that kind of says your average return on investment for a bathroom, kitchen.
Oh, great, okay, that would be very helpful.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments, et cetera, regarding this?
Greg, you were talking about, you know, the guy just puts in new counters and new cabinets and new utensils in the kitchen, but doesn't really upgrade the electric, maybe changes the outlets, the GFI's, but it's got the same old wires and the wall. You say that those improvements will not be, will not impact the appraisal value as much as if they do, did I understand what you're saying?
Exactly, I mean, they will, because it's.
How does the inspector know that if it gets all GFI's, so they can go down and.
Oh, you'll, yeah, you can see it on the paneling. Because like I said, the average kitchen's average six circuits. There's every appliance in your house, in the kitchen, has to be on a separate circuit. Your counter plugs literally have to be on a second circuit. GFI doesn't mean anything, okay? It just looks nice, but you're trying to sell them, nobody has, but if you, whole house inspections are done all the time now.
So if you go to the basement, you got an A D M service down there.
Oh, yeah. And you'll actually see it logged out, and you can actually, and they bring around testers. Some guys are really good, some guys are not so good. I mean, you got some of those guys that will spend three hours in them. They'll go everywhere, do everything. And what, whatever, that report goes back, and that's just like a big checkmark against you. I mean, they use that against you in order to break the price down on the house. And banks know that.
And then the auditors look at all that information before that.
I don't know what the auditors do, but, you know, you know, I mean, it'll happen when they sell the house, you know, that kind of stuff, but it, I guess people just don't realize that putting a Band-Aid on something that really needs a lot of work, there's, it's like there's a disease inside you, you need to get, you cut it all out and really fix it. And, and that's what's hap, that's what be happening here for all this. Even in mine, back in sixty-eight, I had aluminum wiring in my house. That's a no-no. They even told me, said, "Well, you're so stupid, why don't you buy a house in aluminum wiring?" You know, I'm a contractor, I mean, I know what to do, but, you know, I changed a lot of different things, but boy, if you have aluminum wiring, you got to totally cut out everything wherever you're doing the work, because they're going to make you do that anyway. You can't use any aluminum wiring, you know what I mean?
And new, and remodeling and.
Yeah, and houses that, that have, you know, people say, "Well, you can go ahead and do this and put that little, you know, the pigtails and all that stuff." Nah, 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 nah. They're not, you know, they're really strict right now, which is good. You know, even smoke detectors with, with electric and battery backup, they make us do that when we put additions on, even if we put a deck on. If it's a ranch, they're going to make you put it in every bedroom on every floor, you know, basement on the first floor, electric and battery back interconnected, because you can. And that has to go, that's a cost of the owner. They, everything's bringing it up to today's standards, that's, that's what they look at. So that, that's the information that people need if they're going to be doing that. And kitchens and bathrooms are the things that really beef up your, your appraisal value.
Okay. Yes, no, I believe this has already had one reading, so the council is interested in increasing to seventy-five percent. Is that something they do on the floor of the council at the next?
That we have to amend it after the second reading.
The only comment about that is, if, you know, as we examine it and look at, look at it and feel good about it, I just felt that if we're going to do it, we should do it. And who wasn't that mentioned that Cincinnati does a hundred percent? We do have a lot of requirements, and without a serious incentive, we could like take a shot at it at fifty percent, and if it doesn't work, revisit it. I, I just know in the product world, if you introduce something once and then have to come back and introduce it again with a little more, it just loses its, its lost stride. If it makes sense to do it, I think we should, we should do it, you know, at least to the seventy-five percent level on the residential.
Great.
You could, that's a good.
Okay.
So am I hearing for A, B, and C?
A, B.
Just A, B, okay.
And the new leave fifty.
Why not, why not C? Well, why, why don't we want to do C?
Yeah, I, I agree.
And I, I think there is something to encouraging people to restore versus start over.
Yvonne, what do you think about C?
That's a tough one. I know we're putting a lot of requirements on, on renovation, definitely, if at least with our properties, we are. I don't know, I mean, it's a little scary that Cincinnati offers a hundred, maybe even fifty.
I, I mean, I asked you the question in finance when we were working on this about demolition, and, but, you know, one of the things, if you're looking at a structure and it has some asbestos in it, or it has lead hang in it, you're going to have some costs to do the demolition. It's not like you're starting from scratch, so I don't necessarily feel like this promotes demolition.
Because those costs aren't factored in.
Those costs, that's right, those costs are outside of any tax considerations. So I don't think it promote, I don't buy into the thought that this promotes it, because you got a significant expense there.
So are you saying a hundred and a hundred for A and B and seventy-five for C?
No, I did not say that.
Wait, you could even do, if you do C, you can always say, well, let's do the seventy-five for twelve years, if you don't want to do fifteen years. And bring the years down to be twelve like this on B. Man, you got any of what?
Hey, and to, I think it was to Glenn's point, are there other places, I know we're unique, but I just wonder if there's other places we could look at and see how, how they've handled it?
Sacred Heart's, Sacred Heart's doing it. They're doing one at a hundred percent, and they're doing a fifteen-year hundred percent definitely. And then the city of Cincinnati as well. And it's gone really, really well.
And there's a lot that county-wise, too, I have a list downstairs.
Okay.
Are we real, are we competing with them?
Yeah. I don't know.
Are we buying to the same development, core of the building?
We might be competing for new construction, you know, when you think about home, like Potter Hill. Definitely. I think our historic structures are unique, though, so to that extent, I think we're good.
I have a listing here in the village. Had folks that came in Sunday, and they were from Mount Auburn, which kind of surprised me as well, because a lot of us like to think just everybody in the village and that's it. But they were looking to, they want a bigger yard, green space, everything that we have, so it's great. But I was surprised, but they have been looking in and around the city, so I'd be the first to admit that I was a bit surprised, but I think sometimes we are. I think Sacred Heart is, is definitely further in the city, but it has a lot of similar characteristics of the village, a lot, I mean, that's a.
I don't think it's even close. No, no green belt, I don't know.
No, I mean, it's a lot, no, but it's.
No graphics.
Unsurrounded, right.
I don't know, I, I, my office used to be by Sacred Heart, and to me, it just seems like a whole different.
At Sacred Heart, I mean, I went to high school there, and a lot of people from Sacred Heart, so I'm about Sacred Heart.
Army.
Generations, and, you know, to the west, there's High St. Anton, that's where they grew up. But, you know, they, they were really focused in on themselves.
Yeah, I'm not questioning the passion.
Same art state, same art, I mean, it was, I mean, you know, amenity kind of stuff. They, they were on, were on the art for a long time. They had a whole lot of, of business, frankly, a lot of it's gone now.
Yeah.
I only made margarine, you know, it was a trade Sacred Heart, so perfection.
B and G kept Sacred Heart going.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I wasn't talking about passion, you know, for the community as much as, it just seems like a whole different.
Average age, income, average education, average. Right. I would think that there's a lot of similarities, population.
I think too.
Yeah, but if you drive through there or ride around there, it's a huge difference.
They got a nicer food system.
Well, that's neither here nor there. The question is, do you all generally feel like four C needs to be a bigger number than fifty percent? That's, you know, I think that's what we're discussing here, really. Yeah, and as far as answering the question about competing against some of these other places, I think we're competing against everyone. And I think the key to the village, I mean, the number that you had here, Yvonne, that it was, you know, we've gone from forty-one hundred to thirty-six hundred in ten years. We need to attract people that aren't from Green Hills into the village. We need to attract some more people. So I think we're, we're competing against everybody. So I say put the best foot forward and from, from the start, I say increase it.
C, you think we should increase C to seventy-five?
I do.
Well, somebody's going to have to make up an amendment after the second reading.
We're just recording what we're doing, the other two.
Just got to make an amendment. We've got a, a document that's been offered on a first reading, and after the second reading, then we can amend before we move to adopt.
Correct. I have a question. If you have any hesitation of moving a number of, what would it be?
Oh, I have no hesitation.
Okay. Well, no, there must be, well, then why didn't, why wouldn't, why didn't it come to us at a hundred percent?
Or a hundred and ten?
You know what I mean?
Come on, who cares?
Yeah, I don't, I don't feel we need a hundred percent.
Okay.
Could be wrong.
I know, but I'm guessing, trying to uncover.
I don't think we need a hundred percent, and I could be wrong on that, but I, I feel we have a unique.
You know, nobody knows how exact, the exact numbers here, you know, no one can foretell the future.
Right. No, but I guess what I'm trying to understand is.
Why she came with what she came with in the first place?
Right.
And I guess I'd like to think we would get something from it.
Oh.
Other than. So that's good, too, so happy with seventy-five.
And how long would this program be in existence? Is there a sunset on this?
We can review it, there doesn't have to be, we, I think I don't think that we would review it in five years.
Okay. Is that typical?
Yes.
And I like that, really, you know, that's not one way to apply that.
You know, to me, to me, this is really simple math, it was exactly what Glenn said. If sixty-one percent is income taxes, of our revenue, then it makes sense to make the incentive to draw people in here, because most of our revenue comes from income taxes. To me, it's, it's a, it's a number scheme, and it just makes sense. So make the incentive better for people to come here to live, because our money's going to come back to us with a sixty-one percent.
The, the only downside is if you look, and I've talked about this every year at our retreat, if you look at the percentage of revenue that comes to the village from income tax, that percentage keeps climbing higher and higher and higher. And we don't want to be in a position where people say, "Come to Green Hills, it's a great, great place to retire." All the people that are, the few people that are working there are paying all the taxes. I mean, we, we have to be careful with that.
Yeah.
And I hope to retire someday, but.
And so what is your solution to that?
That we make sure that everybody pays their fair share, and we actively look to bring young families in so that there are a lot of people.
Well, this works, it's not a big target, you can come in here for this place.
Yes.
And, and, and. Business, yes.
Yeah, and businesses, yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't think we'll go on a business system.
Okay.
So what are we doing? So like I said, council really will be for, council makes a change.
Yeah, we don't, we can't vote on anything tonight, it's.
I mean, what do you, if you do anything, why don't you just do the seventy-five percent for twelve years for that C is business for B? And if you're giving, you're giving some, you're taking some. Seventy-five percent was a lot better.
What's your thing on making that fifteen years, you want just the dollars?
Um, that's, oh, that's the state maximum that's required, oh, that's needed.
Yeah.
City as well, just to use that as a comparison, but we'll do, and they're looking at tweaking that this year, but ten years on any, anything, and then fifteen years if it's legally certified, so they're, they're incentivizing to please. So I don't know, that's.
More energy efficient. To within your renovation, that's almost that.
Well, for, yeah, construction. Chuck, well, Greg was saying, changing it from fifteen to twelve, maybe the twelve is any construction fifteen if your leads are, help them out to green and, I'm trying to work on that.
I'd just like to say thanks for your work and all the staffs.
Yeah, it's nice.
It's hard to get this perfect, and you'll only figure out the beauty as you review mirror, but I'm excited about this.
All right, shall we move on?